We're live and now recording.
Thanks, Katie. Can we begin with roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Antonio.
Here.
Mr. Badger.
Here.
Mr. Bleefeld. Ms. Kiyabachi.
Here.
Mr. Frank. Mrs. Hayman.
Here.
Ms. Carrie Anikis.
Here.
Dr. Morris.
Here.
Mrs. Ginsberg.
Here.
Harley Meltzer.
Here.
Blake Zimmerman.
Here.
Eight present, one absent, and two student board reps this evening.
Thanks, Katie. Now, everyone, please join me in reciting our Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome, everyone, to this April 24th meeting of the Wissahican School Board. Looking at our agenda, you'll first see we list out our prior meetings. We met on April 10th for a regular public board meeting. April 17th was our Communications Committee meeting and Board Racial Equity Oversight Committee meeting. And the following day, April 18th, was our Finance Committee Budget Workshop. We then list out our upcoming meetings. May 1st will be our next regular public board meeting. May 8th will be a Finance Committee Budget Workshop. May 15th, our next Board Racial Equity Oversight Committee meeting. May 22nd, we'll have both a Communications Committee and our new Health, Wellness, and Safety Committee meeting. May 30th will be another work session. June 5th, a regular public board meeting, and June 12th will be our board retreat. Now, we'll move on to our presentations, and we're going to do them a little out of order. We're going to begin with our Wissahican High School monthly highlights.
Okay, so, starting us off, we had our mini-thon on April 14th, and it was a big success. I was one of the three people who kind of like ran it with a bunch of other officers, too. Thank you. It was, it was very, like, successful, and I'm sure we all know Mr. Ford and the Ford family, and Mrs. Ford came and spoke, which was incredibly impactful, and their son is absolutely adorable, and he won all of the raffles, which was great. And so, it was great. You, like, raised money for such an amazing cause. And then, another reminder is that AP exams in Keystone are coming up, I believe, starting next week. So, students should just make sure they know when their AP exams are. It's a reminder to myself, too, and also where they're supposed to report for those tests. And I'm, I believe, all the teachers have information, and I think there's posts going out on School G nonstop about that. So, I think the information is very much available. And for seniors, there's a lot of stuff to look forward to, starting pretty much now. This Sunday, weather permitting, we're doing the decorating our parking spots with whatever our future holds for us. So, college decisions, whatever you're doing after high school. And then, on May 1st, it's, again, like, another celebration of what you're doing after high school, whatever that may be. And so, I believe the school is setting up a photo booth during lunches, and HSA is providing snacks for seniors, so that's some stuff happening now. And then, the senior prom is on May 19th. Tickets are coming out, and I believe, two weeks with a very hard and fast deadline. I've heard that many times. There's going to be four days to buy tickets, and if you don't buy tickets within those four days, it's not good. So, buy the tickets when they go on sale. And then, the senior trip is on June 6th at Six Flags, which is very exciting. Those tickets are also on sale on my school box. And then, for this summer, for students currently enrolled in grades 9 through 11, the district offers WHS Camp for Success. And some of the things that they offer within this summer program are pre-teaching, reteaching, SAT prep, and a new media literacy boot camp presented by Gwinnett Mercy University. And this new boot camp pretty much teaches students effective reading strategies, skills for discussion and debate regarding media, how to understand and evaluate media, and pretty much just, if you can't tell anything to do with media. So, those are some options for students over the summer.
And for some other highlights, the robotics team's Miss Daisy Robot was given the Engineering Excellence Award after competing at the Springside Chestnut Hill Academy. And also, this past week, they participated in the competition called First Robotics Competition World Championship in Houston, Texas, and they placed 28 out of 77 teams in their division. So, a big congratulations to the robotics team. It's very impressive. Also, a reminder to the students that they are not allowed to park in the teacher lot adjacent to the stadium and the naddatorium due to some safety concerns, and that is obviously not where they should be parking. All of the parking passes have been sold out, and if students do not have a parking pass, they will have to use district transportation, a buses, or arrange their own transportation. And as Dr. Blair, the principal of the high school, has stated in April's Trojan Talk, due to the high school losing a certain amount of student parking spots during the beginning of next year from the construction equipment of, like, constructing the turf fields, parking spaces will only be available for seniors at the start of next year, which is a change that may come with some backlash, but is needed, is necessary for the priority of seniors in their parking. Also, in other news, juniors had a great time at the junior prom on April 21st at the Sheraton Hotel in Valley Forge. And also, we are about halfway through the spring season of all the sports teams, which also includes, like, tennis, baseball, softball, lacrosse, and boys volleyball. So, congratulations to all those teams. They're all doing very well so far.
Thank you so much for that report. That was so exciting to hear all the fun things happening at the high school. I didn't catch it. Where is the prom this year?
Yeah.
Yeah, the senior?
They're different this year, so, yeah.
The senior one is at Westover Country Club.
Oh, very nice. Other comments or questions with all the board members?
I just had a question about the, what's, what's going on with the parking, the change to senior, seniors only? Does that mean that juniors next year will not be allowed to get parking spaces?
Yes, this was a topic that we discussed prior to this, prior to tonight with some of the high school administration, and it was not set in stone when we discussed it with the assistant principals, but due to Dr. Blair unfortunately being out of the building, there has been, there has been, like, conflicting ideas on what to do with the situation of student parking. We've seen an increase in the amount of kids who are using their vehicles and parking their vehicles in the teacher lot, which is next to the stadium. And this poses many safety threats due to the, the school buses, the majority of school buses coming through the naddatorium side, and students, to get to their cars, will have to walk through this, the school bus line. When that's, that parking lot is designed for the teachers who exit school around 3 o'clock, when this, when the buses already left. So, that poses a safety threat when the students should not be parking there anyway. And then, on top of the turf fields being constructed next year, which is a very exciting process, but there needs to also be place for the construction vehicles to be parked, which is going to decrease the amount of, like, parking spots that are available to students next year. And to, like, the only way to secure the priority of seniors in their parking is going to be only letting seniors have a parking spot next year. Because as of right now, there's 322 parking spots. Mr. Kelly, one of the assistant principals, tossed out a number of maybe 40 spots being lowered, so that poses only about 280 parking spots for both seniors and juniors. So, that, that could bring about some issues.
Since my boys are seniors, I mean, they will be seniors next year. It doesn't affect them. It actually affects them positively, but I suspect we, as a board, might be hearing some, or getting some emails about this from junior parents next year.
Like, how many kids are in your class, you know?
I believe there's 1,300 in the whole school, so...
375 in the senior class, if that's of any help, like, 364, actually. I don't know why that's so precise, but I'm pretty sure that's the number.
You gotta know that for, for percentages of graduations.
I'm hoping with the graduation, so I, like, know the...
Jim, do you know the junior class number by chance? Do you know that? Right around there?
Like, mentioned in that ballpark.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? All right, Seemun, thank you so much again for that report. All right, we'll move on now to our OEOF student report.
Okay, so, tonight, we're just going to recap this year's trivia night. On Saturday, March 25th, OEOF hosted its annual trivia night event at the Upper Gwinnett Firehouse. In this sold-out event, 15 teams competed in 10 rounds of fast-paced trivia to fundraise for our Wissahican classrooms. This event raised over $6,000 to support learning grants for our classrooms. Because of your support at this event, OEOF continues to fund innovative educational programs in our Wissahican schools for the 2023 to 2024 school year.
We would like to congratulate our 2023 trivia night champions. Table 13, and second place was table nine, and in third place was table seven. I was rooting for you. You just... Who, we would like to, oh, I'm sorry. We also have two special shout-outs. First, the desserts at the event were prepared and provided by the North Monaco Technical Career Center, and the student-run bakery, student-run bakery four, and Wissahican students are enrolled in the culinary program at NMTCC, Daisy Cortez Aguilar, Brianna Burton Tober, Kayla Newman, and Crystal Sacramento. We had cookies, mini cupcakes, mini eclairs, and raspberry bars, which I took home. I had a lot of, a lot of leftover food, so that was, that was another plus to it. And, second, a special shout-out to our OEOF trivia night planning committee, including OEOF board members Stephanie Romano, Allison Matizic, and Rob Data, and Gordon Bentley as well. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for us?
Also, a shout-out to our own Katie, who was... She was there helping out on this really awesome night, so... No, I had a lot of fun. It was, it was a great event. Great job, guys.
Any other questions or comments? All right, Seemun, thank you so much for that report. All right, we'll move on now to our middle school invention convention.
Okay, this is exciting. We, we've, I'm not going to spill the beans. I'll let our presenters do that, but we are pleased to have with us tonight one of the assistant principals at Wissahican Middle School, Ms. Tamara McGill, to introduce her team and her students, and get us going.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Chrisfield. It's nice to see the board and student reps. Hopefully, our middle schoolers are excited about all the things going on at the high school as well, since they'll be coming up soon. I will be presenting Julian Lowenstein. She's our French and gifted teacher at the middle school. She's been there for four years, awesome relationships with the students, and allowing them to be innovative. So, these students are representing their project from second marking period around their technology presentation. So, Julian Lowenstein.
Thank you.
So, I have a little presentation set up, and then I'm actually going to have the students come up and talk you about their inventions that they made. So, we participated in the PA Invention Convention this year with our gifted technology class of the seminar that runs, and as we saw, it ran in the second marking period this year. So, students have, I'm going to just kind of walk through a little bit what the convention is. As you can see, it really focuses on creativity, critical thinking, innovation, and teamwork. One of the really cool things about this seminar is that a lot of it is really the students, and it allows them to take control of their learning and find a solution to a problem that is interesting to them. So, you can see kind of some of the guidelines as you go through. They thought of a problem first that they wanted to solve, and then, they thought of some different solutions, created prototypes, and tested, refined those prototypes, and then made an elevator pitch, kind of like what you would see on Shark Tank. You're going to see some live elevators that appear tonight in a few moments about their projects that they created. So, they follow going through this, the engineering and design process. And so, you can see it's a continuous process of iteration, testing, really making sure that they have a good working prototype for what they're trying to create. Both students tonight created apps, and they'll talk to you a little bit about them. Just to show you a little bit about the competition itself, so students start out and they have the state qualifiers. And this is the rubric you can see up on here. They look at invention process, invention impact, and invention communications. And so, they start off by competing against other schools in the county and the state, and then, they actually, our students here tonight, all three of them qualified and went to the state competition. So, we're really proud of them representing Wissahican this year at Kalahari in the Poconos, and they were able to present to judges on their inventions and give their elevator pitches live again there, which you'll hear in a few moments. So, I have with me tonight, if they want to come on up, I have Emmy Sher, Amelia Gibson, who created Send a Smile, that's their application, and Vera Gasha, who created MediTracker. And she has a little prototype to share with you as well that she 3D printed. So, I'm going to turn it over to them. They're excited to be here with you tonight, and I'm really proud of them for being here, so...
All right, hello. So, the video we're about to show you is the elevator pitch that got us into the finals at the invention convention.
It's short, but we hope that you can get a general sense of our prototype.
In today's world, there's so much sadness surrounding us.
We need to take all the chances we can to uplift our friends and show our appreciation.
Hi.
Hi, Emmy Sher.
And I'm Amelia Gibson.
We have a solution to this problem.
Send a smile with daily prompts and fun mini-game. Send a smile to the app you need to stay connected to your friends.
So, let's see how it works.
First, a notification will pop up at a seemingly random time of the day. Open the app and see what prompt awaits you.
It is always something different, from describe this person as a color to send a picture of little you.
Just choose three months and off with your positive message.
When the prompt has been locked yet or has already been sent, the app will open to this homepage. You can also find your set history, here to keep you accountable.
While you can only answer one prompt a day, you can still play fun mini-games with your friends.
Try things like friendship quizzes, personality type tests, and compliment speed rounds.
As a bonus, once you've sent it up smiles, you can unlock other fun games.
We stand apart from our competitors as an app focused solely on lifting others up and spreading joy through the world.
Not only is our priority spreading positivity, but this app is accessible to anyone 12 and older.
Just go to the App Store and download.
It is time to start sending smiles.
So, for the competition, we created this child bowl to explain our app. We also handed out stickers and candy, which are pretty popular with the younger inventors. We didn't bribe the judges, so don't worry. We really enjoyed seeing the other inventions and explaining our app to families 16-5.
I think I can speak for both of us when I say that it was really beneficial to be questioned by the judges. We were forced to think about our app more critically and come up with some awesome new ideas.
And the girls brought with you some of the stickers that they created they'd like to share with you. So, they'll be coming around with stickers for you all for their app Send a Smile. A real-life elevator pitch here. And as you can tell, they really worked very hard on this, and even down to perfecting that timing on that video. If you noticed, the words went along very well with our animations. Next, Vera Gasha, who also worked very hard on her project, is going to talk to you about her product, the MediTracker.
Hello, my name is Vera Gasha. I'm an eighth grader at WMS. I recently competed in the invention convention and qualified for the state competition. Today, I'll be telling you about my invention, the MediTracker. When brainstorming my ideas for the competition, I decided that I wanted to create something that would help someone. I decided to invent something that would help elderly people, like my grandparents. The device is aimed at helping the elderly remember to take their medicine by using a variety of prompts. The design I made is wearable and consists of a rotating face that is used to command the device. The MediTracker also works using voice commands. The device reminds users to take their medicine using vibrating, flashing, and voice prompts. The device also has the ability to call emergency contacts if medicine is not taken in a given amount of time. Emergency contacts can also check in on the user by calling the device. I created a prototype using a 3D printer. In the future, I plan to create a completely working prototype. Overall, competing in the competition was an interesting and fun opportunity, and I really enjoyed having the chance to create something using my imagination. Thank you.
And as you can see, Vera also brought her trifold along with her prototype displayed up here. And that's all we have. Do you have any questions? You all come back up real quick in case there's any question.
So, first of all, could you pass around the prototype? That's something we could pass around to see.
So, I think she was, to say, is a little fragile.
Oh. Yeah.
Did 3D print it, and has it up here? Anyone else hop over and look at it?
Do you want to walk around with it and just be, take a glance?
Walk around with it? There you go. Okay.
And what wonderful presentation. So, first, Send a Smile. Is this, so, did you actually create an app that we could download? Or this is the idea for the app? Yeah. I wasn't sure, like, when I saw the five stars, I wasn't sure if you actually intended to do it. So, I think it's a great idea. I think that'd be wonderful, like, to be able to spread happiness and cheer to your friends, brighten someone's day, because everyone has a bad day now and then. To get a message like this would just be wonderful. So, I really like that idea, and I also like the MediTracker. I know my grandmother always forgot to take her pills, and it'd be great to have a device that reminds you to do that.
Well, it's funny, when Vera said that, that she was thinking of this app, I was like, oh, man, I forgot my medicine this morning. So, I wish I had that product myself.
I know, but I forget to take my vitamins, like, every other day. So, that kind of device would be, like, wonderful to have. So, other comments, questions? I have a question. What inspired the MediTracker? Because...
I remember when I was visiting, I almost forgot to take their medicine, so I wanted to create something that would help them.
That's really great. I love it. Other board members? Steffi?
Not a question, just thank you. I, I love all this kind of innovation and critical thinking that you guys did. How was, well, one question, how was the experience going to the event and doing this in a space where it's unknown? And, you know, kind of like, high-intensity, probably. How did you enjoy that, or did it maybe?
We was happy. Fun walking around with the other investors, the other investors. So nice, and they're so willing to share and talk about their ideas.
Yeah, and the judges were really nice. They spent a while with us and showed that they had a lot of interest in, like, each person's project. So, you really felt they were listening, and they wanted to learn so much more about your invention.
I really enjoyed walking around and seeing a few other ideas. It was a really interesting experience.
Did you get some inspiration there for, like, next year? New idea?
We definitely came up with some new ideas for our app while they were questioning us, like, some things right on the spot that maybe would work in the future.
Great. Any other questions?
I have, I have, oh, sorry. Yeah, I have a question. So, for the MediTracker, so, since I can't see it because I'm not there, can Vera explain a little bit about how it works? Like, does it, like, does a timer go off, and how do you set it?
It's a watch that you can wear, and it has a rotating face, and it works with voice control, and also, it reminds people using, like, flashing, vibrating, and voice prompts.
That's really amazing. Congratulations to both of the teams that, for the Send a Smile and the MediTracker. Amazing. Thank you.
If, I was going to ask how much equity you're seeking for how much, for how much money? Just kidding. But, but to both teams, a fantastic job. You guys look very professional and made a great pitch. And have another round of applause for our presenters.
So, we always get a picture at the end, so if you guys don't mind, if you could bring your signs with you, we'll do, if you picture over here, or there.
Yeah, we could do it right there.
Yeah. Thank you again. Have a good night. Did she take some cookies and brownies? All right, that one is a tough one to follow. We... I never be left. So, our elementary school schedule. This will be an exciting presentation, though.
Thank you. We're so excited to have our entire elementary principal team here this evening. They've worked throughout the year with support from Dr. Schmidt, who's also here this evening in the audience, our Director of Teaching and Learning, to work through the elementary schedule creation process, exploring a wide range of information in the field in terms of what best practices are out there, what research shows supports the, the process for developing the new elementary schedule. And we know as well, there's been a lot of conversation and buzz around the topic of recess, and so, that was one of the priority areas. So, this evening, they're going to walk through a presentation to talk about those priority areas as well as outcomes, and a status update on the elementary schedule creation process. Thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Can I walk out here? Good evening, everyone. I'm all, yeah, I'm a complete student. And the four of us, like Dr. Devine said, are here to present kind of the process that we use to create a new elementary schedule. So, I'm just going to go through some things with you. We started out with some outcomes or some goals that we wanted to achieve. We wanted to align our student learning with grade-level outcomes and expectations. We wanted to promote rigorous instructional opportunities for all of our students. We wanted to make sure that we strategically use all of our staff and all of our resources to maximize student impact and learning. We wanted to utilize, of course, best practices to create an efficient process for our schedule, and we wanted to include opportunities for student connections and movement. And you will see all of these things as we go through where we are now. So, speaking of where are we now, here is the schedule that we followed. We started way back in September, talking about this, developing our goals, talking to the people on our staff, our teachers, our aides, everyone, you know, in the building about, you know, what are their hopes and dreams for a master schedule, what would they like to see? And then, we, we gathered some formal feedback from our staff. We also, at one point, reached out to parents and families and got feedback from them to help guide our thinking and our creation of the schedule for the elementary schools. And so, right now, we are, have a draft schedule, and we are, have presented that to all of our, to do at our schools. And so, that's where we are right now. We have a draft ready to go, that we will share some of those parts with you tonight. And then, we'll also talk about what our next steps are this evening.
I'm Jason DiAlco, I'm the principal at Shady Grove, and I'm a more behind-the-putting type of guy in front of it. So, we talked about a couple of things, and Paula just hit on the first one, was what were the overarching goals and priorities? And that's really what she shared in that second slide. And then, with the second one, talking about what works in our existing schedule and what do we need to address. There's a lot of things that do work in our existing schedule. I mean, we're very happy with the way that we approach math and ELA instruction. But what we noticed, and the feedback that we were really getting from our, our teaching team at the start, was just the time allocations and the amount of time it takes to do certain things. And was that necessarily, we were finding creative ways to, to meet the, the time demands of ELA or math and having to shift things around. So, we really wanted to address that and make sure that people had the time that they needed to address specific content areas. And really look at if there was additional time in certain areas that was not needed, you know, could that time potentially be repurposed? So some of the non-negotiables we had to look at was obviously the teacher workday had to stay the same until length of time. The student workday had to stay the same. It required teaching subjects that we have, math, ELA, so the science encore, all needed to remain intact. And then also looking at our staffing too. Obviously, we weren't gonna hire a whole, you know, host of new teachers to come in and implement a brand new schedule. So working with our current staff to create a schedule that works. The second thing that we looked at are certain, like basics that we had to consider, some of them being the minute allocations for classes. And we'll share two graphics with you that will show you what we have previously been using in terms of minimum allocations. And along with that is that the number of minutes within a school day had to be consistent from our old schedule to our new schedule. Looking at lunch recess are certain things that are basics that need to take place during the course of the day. Obviously, during certain times of the day too, which really does dictate part of the schedule when you're, you know, doing lunch from a 10:45, 10:50 to 12:30-ish range, you need to build a schedule around that lunchtime. Delivery of related services, which could be special education services, English language learner services, gifted education services. All those things have to be in consideration. And then also another piece that I'm not sure a lot of people are aware of, but our co-curricular, which would be our instrumental program, our students take lessons during the day. And having a schedule where the instrumental program is mostly the third, fourth, and fifth grade, all kids have exposure to general music, but when we're getting into, you know, playing an instrument, the current schedule wasn't really allowing for our instrumental teachers to pull students throughout the day because we had concentrations of math, ELA, different things where the future just blocks the time where it was available. So those are some of the basic things we need to consider. And then we need to consider also just best practices. When we're creating the schedule, trying not to interrupt blocks of time. What I mean by that is if we have, you know, a 70-minute block of math, making sure that we have a 70-minute continuous block of math, not having 50 minutes here, 20 minutes there, and really trying to prioritize that instructional time. Looking at that we have time for intervention and enrichment. We do that currently through Pi is what we call it at the elementary school level. But we also have times during the day that, you know, learning support teachers or gifted support teachers are pushing into the classroom. Then you make sure we stagger the schedule so they're able to do that because often times those features work across many grade levels. So that's a point for consideration. And then another best practice, recess and recess before lunch is a thing that we wanted to maintain and make sure we can. So these are our current minute allocations. I won't spend too much time on it, but you can see they're the same. You look at kindergarten, you look at fifth grade, every subject area, down to, you know, math, science, social studies, Pi, recess, every grade level has the exact same period allocation in each content area. And that was something that was a little bit problematic. You know, a math lesson in kindergarten runs a little different than a math lesson in fifth grade. So our teachers were always kind of looking for how can we allocate this time and reflects more of what we do. And we'll show you the new time allocations in just a second. So I'm gonna pass it over to.
Hello, everyone. I'm Angela Farlow, the principal at the elementary. And like Jason mentioned, we were hoping to accomplish, what we're hoping to accomplish with schedule. What did the stakeholders, including teachers and parents, what did they identify as some of the priority areas to develop in the schedule? Well, we looked at the language arts block and we realized that we needed to increase the time. So the language arts block will be extended in grades K to 3 for early literacy skill development and implementation for foster programs. So that's one of the changes we'll see. So in grades K to 2, we're looking at 135 minutes for language arts. Grade, and also in grade 3, we'll see it increases to 105. Like Dr. Bianca mentioned, you'll see where we are with that new schedule allocated. There's also an increased opportunity for student connection movement, and that does include things like a distributed recess for more recess time at each grade level. We're also gonna dedicate time for morning meetings. We have morning meetings current now, but the teachers felt like they wanted it part, they wanted to be part of their schedule. They wanted to know that they were there for them to use to make those connections, to start the day with the CLI and to build passion. So for grades K to 2, if you think about recess, we're having two 15-minute recess periods. Grades 3 to 5, one 15-minute recess period, one 10-minute recess period. The teachers will continue to incorporate frequent movement rates throughout the day. We also felt like it was important to increase efficiency to maximize instructional time and spending. So our encore schedule should be 12 days. Currently, it's like a 24-day. So in order for that to occur, guidance lessons are now going to be scheduled separately each trimester to provide greater flexibility. So STEM lessons will become part of the vibrant education content. The schedule will incorporate uninterrupted instructional block and continue to provide daily Pi time, which is practice intervention enrichment to support the needs of all students. And within the schedule, there's embedded time for arrival and homecoming at the dismissal. A previous schedule, it wasn't part of the day. We just kind of looked like we were teaching until the end of the day, but that wasn't it. Teachers felt like they were losing class time. So if you could plan for that dismissing time and put it into our schedule, they would be able to do time better. That's why we see our current allocation. Back to Bianca.
So Ms. Farlow kind of went through what the differences are. And I know, you know, it'd be nice to look at these side by side. It's massively overwhelming to most people at some point. But if you're looking at the numbers, I'll kind of throw in the added parts is really ELA, you see a step up, especially in grades K 1, 2. We started implementing the foundations program to improve our students' reading and we've been very, and writing. Been very happy with what we're seeing so far. But that was a, you know, we just started a program this year, and it's a 30-minute embedded lesson in your ELA block. So now we're giving A1, 2 teachers more time to do that. All of the minute allocations as well as, you know, Paula shared at the beginning, this is a collaborative process. We went and talked to our teachers about the minimum allocations and say, what, what kind of time do you use? What kind of time do you need? And that's where these minutes were kind of staggered, and that's where they came from. Obviously, in math in the younger grades versus math in the older grades, you see it's progressive. It's actually inverse of what ELA is doing. More time spent foundational reading in the K 1, 2 range. And then when you're getting up as you go to 3, 4, 5, in math, you're spending more time there in the math block than you were in the earlier elementary levels. And then you will see, obviously, our lunch recess times have increased by 15 or 10 minutes, respectively, depending on the grade level. So that used to say on that old one, lunch recess 45 minutes across the board. Now you're saying 60 minutes or 55 minutes depending on the grade level. Those were the kind of major changes, science and social studies as well. Most of the lessons that our teachers were doing were in the range, depending on the grade level of that 35 to 45 minutes. Previous allocation is 60 minutes of time. And like I said, teachers were finding ways to, you know, try to make sure we're getting all the instruction in. And this was an area that they felt that, you know, this was a plenty amount of time for them to deliver those science and social studies lessons.
Everyone, good evening. I'm Sue Kanata, I'm the principal at Lover Buonin. It's good to see everyone. To follow along, I'm gonna talk about some of the impacts of the changes that we had, that we see on the elementary schedule. But I just want to piggyback on what Dr. Bianca had said about the priority areas and say that one of the exciting things through this process was that when we gathered feedback from the community, our big priorities were in alignment with what the community's big priorities were too. And then that also triangulated to the big priorities that staff were feeling for the schedule too. So as we were working through the process, it was a really nice alignment because what we knew were best practices and what we wanted to see as big priorities, the staff felt that way too, and the community felt that way too in their feedback. So that's something to highlight as we move forward. So one of the things, in court, of course, when there is a increase in minutes, there's also a decrease in minutes in places. And we took that very seriously because we didn't want to make changes that would impact our big priorities or best practices in certain content areas. But we also knew that a schedule that we had in place for the last 20 or more years wasn't a one-size-fits-all. So with that, we know that there were 400 minutes in the student day, and some of the changes that happened was in the math period specifically. K to 2 was, is currently at 75 minutes and will be moving forward. K to 1, a 60-minute math block, and grade 2, a 65-minute math block. And we felt confident and our staff felt confident that they could still deliver a really good core instruction lesson with differentiation and provide kids in K to 2 with the instruction that they needed in math. It's also an opportunity with morning meeting now actually being a chunk of the day. Our K to 2 grades do a morning routine as part of their current math block with the 75 minutes. And that morning routine piece would become part of the morning meeting piece. So we thought that it could be, you know, reciprocated in another area of the schedule. And then other minutes too, for science and social studies, some of the minutes that we got for language arts or that we got for increased movement across recess or at different times during the day was a decrease in our science and social studies time. And what that looks like is at K to 2, we're moving to a 35-minute block for science or social studies. For grade 3, a 40-minute, and grade 4 and 5, 45 minutes. And our feedback there, when working with staff, it was very much indicated to us that this is an opportunity, especially in the area of science and social studies, to do interdisciplinary learning through language arts. Much of the program in language arts could be reciprocated during science and social studies time. And one of the wonderful things that Dr. Schmidt does during our curriculum review process is helping us see as we write the curriculum and we move forward with new curriculum in certain areas, is that interdisciplinary process that we feel will be able to happen for math and science. So where we are now, if you think back to where Ms. Fenenzia started with the timeline, where we are currently is we do have a final draft of the schedule that we plan to share with families, and we're going to do that in a two-prong effect. We will share with our HSAs and reveal the schedule at an upcoming meeting. And then we will open it up to the greater community for an elementary schedule Q and A with all families and caregivers, all of us together through Microsoft Teams. And we plan to do that at an upcoming evening on May 18th at 6:30. Now, we've opened it up now for any questions that you might have.
Thank you for that presentation. So who has questions or comments?
I have questions, yes. First of all, thank you all for being here and thank you for your work on this. As you may or may not know, Sue does know, I'm a big fan of more recess. I guess one concern I did have is with the 10-minute recess for 3 to 5, you know, if you count for transition times, are they gonna be outside for five minutes? Like, that makes me a little bit worried. That's one question. Another question is 135 minutes for K to 2 ELA. That is a long time for a kid that age. Are you gonna put the second recess maybe stuck right in the middle there? I don't know. And my third question is, how do the teachers feel about this schedule? Thank you.
So for the teachers, I think we all, one of the steps in the timeline was to take our final to our staff. And we've most recently done that and received really great feedback from staff. Very pleased across the board.
All right, I'll address the ELA block. Maybe K 2. So our ELA block for all of our grades is split up into different. There's ground instruction, there's small group instruction where students are, you know, small groups of students are working with the teacher and working collectively on various activities. And then there's motivation with writing. So within our ELA block, it's broken up into different things. So students aren't just sitting at their desk getting information for two hours. It's broken up. So they are moving out of that time. But we felt like it was good to set on the foundation. So well, and best practices to make sure that all of these are in the literacy block of the ELA block.
I just want to mention about the foundations program that we just started this year, how excited our teachers are to use it, how receptive the students are to the program. And the feedback that we received from them was, we love it, just don't have time to do all the things that we want to do. So we really felt important for great foundations to their program so that they had that dedicated time. And depending on the grade level, there was some talk back and forth with the different grades. What feels better? What feels more natural to you as far as the schedule? Do you need a break here, a break there? But we were really cognizant of how the day flowed. We wanted to make sure there were opportunities for students to get up and move and come back and, is it time for math? Or can we come back to writing? So we really considered all of those pieces were planned in that large block.
And just a clarifying question comment. When you host your family and caregiver Q and A session on May 18th, at that time, if I understand correctly, you'll be showcasing what that looks like across the grade levels in terms of what the day in the life of a second grader will look like, the day in the life of a fourth grader. For this meeting, for the larger community, it was really about the highlights and the shifts in time allocation. And when you're meeting with families and caregivers, am I correct in my understanding that you'll show what that looks like for each grade level? Is that correct?
And the last question about recess transition time. The second recess, there's no transition to lunch. That's where really you're looking at transition time, right? Nobody really has a problem getting out to recess. The teachers don't go, and they're dropping them there. Like, that's, it's always that coming back in, transitioning to lunch. And that second recess, there isn't transition to lunch. So that should help in terms of that, eliminating transition time and really getting the max out of those minutes for their second recess. That makes sense.
So I had a question about instrument lessons. Where is that going to fit into the picture? Both of my kids play an instrument, and I don't really know my son, when his exact, I know what day it is, but I don't know when it falls during. My daughter, I hear all the time, it always falls during art class. And that really annoys her because she loves art. So how are we working it so that it kind of shifts? Do you want to always have it over the same class?
So one of the things that we did was, we looked at, first of all, Pi time is an option for whole kids in instrumental lesson. 3, 4, 5, all have Pi at different times. So that opens up a slot. Encore, you mentioned, missing in art class could be a potential place. 3, 4, 5, all have different slots in encore. That's not always been the way. Sometimes in 3, 4, 5, there are, the encores wouldn't overlap. I'm sorry, social studies, science is another potential place. Social studies, science used to overlap across grade levels. And that eliminated a bit overlap across grade levels. That made it harder to stagger during the course of a day, if that's a potential place. But what we're working with our instrumental teachers is to do things that avoid what you just described, having to miss an encore multiple times. When they're creating the rotation, it would be something where you pull from Pi, and then maybe you'd go to an encore class, or maybe you'd go to social studies, science, but breaking that up so it's not at the same time. So somebody doesn't have to miss that consistently. But our, but really, that was something that we looked at. And I'll be honest, like, social studies and science, a lot of teachers prefer to have that near the end of the day. That was in our, one of the iterations of our schedule, pre-pandemic and even a little bit now. And they kind of like that. They had to say, listen, you can't, like, instrumental, and it's a balance, a give and take, and making sure that everybody has the, you know, that we're looking at it from all angles. But that's what we're trying to do from the instrumentalist. We really have staggered all of, all of those different things. We really have staggered all of, all of those different things that hopefully now instrumental will happen all throughout the day. Because right now it's a lot of instrumental lessons are afternoon heavy, very afternoon heavy, not so much middle of the day. Maybe a couple in the morning. Now we're trying to make it throughout the whole day to avoid those things.
We also, to add on to that, we also were cognizant of the lunch and recess schedule, which could spread over third, fourth and fifth grade for a longer period of time and not be an opportunity for kids to have lessons. So that was part of our thinking too, is being strategic about the lunch periods so that there would be a bigger opportunity for our kids to get pulled for lessons and not impact something else on the backend.
That's great.
So firstly, thank you so much. It's, it's, it's very well acknowledged how much work went into this. I totally get how big of a challenge this was. So thank you. Thank you for your cross stakeholder approach. Thank you for not making it one size fits all. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Two, just two questions. You keep referring to the schedule as a final draft. So does that mean there's still opportunity for further tweaking? And then my second question, and forgive me, my kids are in high school now, so I don't remember. But what is morning meeting and why is it 15 minutes would be my like kind of reaction to that schedule. But overall, thank you, thank you, thank you. I think this was well overdue.
So our final final will be coming out in May. So this is, that's why this is our final draft. So there is a slight possibility that maybe something will get changed, but this is what our plan is to go for as of right now. Morning meetings are a time for our classes to, for a classroom community to create that community in the classroom. So they work on a lot of social emotional learning skills at that time. And just work to build the community of the classroom. And we thought that that was so important. Most of our teachers do these already, but felt that it was important to have this in the schedule across the board so that it is an expectation that all teachers could have a specific time. And I feel that there are a lot of benefits after that, you know, one specific time. And if a high school does something each morning, their students and being able to do something like that as a school, it will classes.
Right now, to just schedule in our current schedule, there's 10 minutes for like homeroom, morning meeting, eating breakfast. And that's from 8:30 to 8:40. And the expectation is at 8:40, we're starting instruction. 10 minutes after some of our kids really walk into the building. And at our level, you know, using the restroom, eating breakfast takes a little bit of time too. So we really wanted to have a start to our day that was not frenetic. That did focus on the community because that's a bright now at 8:40, it's potential that we're starting a reading and reading specialists are coming to the classroom to pull kids to take them for reading at 8:40. While they've got milk and cereal, like unpacking their book bag. So really we wanted to have, it's a frenetic start for kids. We want to have a start that got them started in the right way, in a nice way. Any of you've ever gone into work 30 minutes later, like you know what that feels like. You're drinking your coffee at home, not in the car. Like we want that for the kids.
It's also a really great opportunity. We talked about having our counselors a little more available. Where counselors should be part of that morning meeting too. And to help teachers make that connections or build connections with students too. So they'll be able to see four of the students on a regular basis. They know that that time is there.
So happy to hear that word, community, coming up again and again. To me, that's the most important thing to start the day with that really strongly focused. Perfect. Thank you.
I have one more comment. If it's not final, final, and you can squeeze five more minutes of recess for my third to fifth graders, I would love it.
I do have a question also.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
So lunch, recess and parking seem to be hot topics. It seems like we've, we've figured out a way to touch on all of them within an hour tonight. So I should acknowledge that. But I think it's been done a fantastic job of researching and reevaluating how we spend our days. Given that there's a finite period of time, 400 minutes that students have to work within, as well as the faculty and administration. It seems these days we have increasing needs for our students, whether it's tutoring to make up gaps in education because of the most recent pandemic that has separated our children as well as the achievement gap and other issues. One thing we seem to have done effectively is use early morning time within the elementary level for things like musicals and practice for, for those sorts of things. I think that's phenomenal. Could there be an opportunity to use that early time to help catch our children up who are lacking in any particular area? Whether it be counseling, whether it be academic, on a voluntary basis and an as-needed basis, given the finite time that we have to work with. Could that be an opportunity for us moving forward?
We previously used after-school time for that to run programs, but we're able to staff them. That's an after-school period of about an hour that the students have. And that's what we've done for, for years. We haven't looked too much at the morning time. Part of the, the things that happen in the morning is the kids that are coming in for that music and band practice are coming in right at about seven forty, forty-five. Gosh, depending on seven fifty-ish until like that eight, eight twenty period, and then they go to home roads. Some of the things that we do at that time is we run professional development at that morning block for teachers. So our musical teacher wouldn't be necessarily attending that. So, you know, that seven fifty to eight twenty time right now is a PD time for, for teachers. So it would depend on, you know, scheduling PD and not saying it's not possible, just like, you know, what that's what we do at that current time. Because it's, you know, whether it's the reading specialist delivering PD, whether it's our instructional coaches delivering PD, that's always kind of a block of time. Or even us as building principals, that's where I lose most of my committee meetings is in that timeframe. Because at the end of the day, we have 10 minutes from the end of the instructional period to the end of the teacher day. Instructional day ends at 3:10 and 3:15 respectively. It's just a little split there. And then we have 10 minutes till the teacher's instructional day ends. So just things we would have to balance and consider as we.
I will add to that. Thank you, Dr. Bielka. I think that was all very well said. I won't repeat any of that. I'll just extend upon it and let you know that, that we, Dr. Schmidt and I have, and along with the elementary principals, are continuing to look at all potential ways that we can provide those additional services to students. And, and so nothing's off the table. He's shared some of the challenges and what it might impact. And yet we do, we do keep all things on the table as we look ahead, especially into next school year and thinking about what are some creative and unique ways we can provide services to students. So thank you for that.
Great, thank you. As we have increased needs, it's great that we're looking at different and innovative ways to approach them. So thank you.
I have a follow-up question about the schedules. So you said we're moving from one to 12, one to 24 to now one to 12. But now it's like one A and then it starts one B. So, and like the only things I could think of, like we have health and then phys ed, like would typically be like an A or B and then library or guidance. Is there anything else that typically will, like what, what's going to be the change? Like what have we changed in that from 24 to 12?
For us, it would mostly be that library guidance. So getting rid of, so I understand that that B schedule allows for guidance lessons to be a part of the day. So what we want to do is fill that time with extra library courses and let the librarians who are typically our STEM teachers also use those days for STEM also. So it's going to be a lot easier to understand because it won't be one A, one B, two A, two B. We'll just have 12 string D.
Okay. So really the only thing they're losing out on that 24, 12 and 12 is guidance, which is now going to be fit in elsewhere. So they're not going to lose any art or music or gym, nothing like that. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? No? All right. Well, thank you again so much. I'm really excited about this plan. And please take cookies or brownies. All right, that takes us now to our first public comment period. All right, we have one person registered in person. That's Carmina Taylor. When you approach, please state your name, your municipality and your topic. And I'll remind you that you have three minutes and it's not a practice engage in any sort of.
So I see Marshall's not here, but the policy 903, I have a question. And this is actually a question to be answered. First of all, I have been in school districts across the county that have amended their 903 policy because of me. And they have specifically taken out, sound like, you know, Satterton has specifically taken out 501, 903 A or I don't know, the one about anyone representing a group in the community and school district. I want to commend you guys for keeping that in. And so my question Wade would be, what was the decision to keep it in opposed to eliminating it? Because I think it's the right thing to do. Are you listening to me, Wade? It's where it says C, D and then A in 903. You're keeping that correct? If it's not crossed out, you're keeping that to that? Yes, Wade?
So Carina, it's not our practice to engage.
Okay, okay. So then that's a good thing. And I want to know why you did keep it. And then I, I think I was sounded jumbled when I was on the board meeting before. And I want to just, Amy, you are the presiding officer. I think it is significant that as you give your disclaimer about the constraints of a, of public comments, it should be noted that the fact that you're keeping that the presiding officer may temporarily waive on a non-precedent setting basis on one or more of the above restrictions if his or her judgment circumstances call for such a waiver. I think in a situation like that I'm the only person here, and if I go three minutes and 45 seconds, I should be given 45 seconds. But the language here a-actually says that you have the ability to allow me to have that 45 seconds. So if you don't, it kind of looks bad that I keep coming up here and you keep cutting me off at three minutes where the language says that you don't necessarily have to. I'm not asking to speak for six minutes, but if I go a minute beyond and I'm the only person sitting here and there's nobody online, what's the problem? So I want, I, I wish I could go. I have comments that don't relate to the agenda and I'll stay. But I think those two things are important. So just would like to know why you kept that first line in the people that could speak and just to acknowledge that you might consider emphasizing that you have the ability to temporarily waive more than three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you for this comment. Katie, is there anyone online?
There are no raised hands on Zoom.
Okay, then we'll move on to our board president report. I have no informational items this evening. Under action items, I do have one, approval of Tim Matthews as board treasurer for the 2324 school year. And we'll be voting on that next week. Superintendent report?
Thank you. Before I get to my one action item for a review type, I want to highlight the fact that the Wissahickin High School Ultimate Frisbee Team, once again, has qualified for the national championship. And they'll be going, yes, that's, that's a applause for Wolf as we affectionately know them. And the team will be going out to Salt Lake City, I think it is, the day after school. You'll see that later as a review item in 14B11. But I just wanted to, to call attention to a really gifted group of student athletes at the high school. So congrats to Wolf. And my one item tonight for review is what we've been talking about quite a bit in the last few weeks. And that is the finalizing of this year's calendar to reflect the fact that we did not use the two built-in weather days. So as we've discussed multiple times, the Friday before Memorial Day weekend will be a recess day. And then the other day will be given back at the end of the year, one, ending day, one day, or school year, one day soon. But that's just for review tonight, no vote. Any questions on that, Kelly?
Jim, my only question is, I'm trying to recall, did they say there are any after-school activities, let's say June 9th? Would they still be at the elementary level? Would they still be able to be held if we have a half-day? You know, if there are any activities, anything?
I don't know about the specifics of June 9th, but I do know that the last three days for negotiated contract are early dismissal day.
Okay.
So that would be, yes, that would be Friday the 9th, Monday the 12th and Tuesday the 13th.
And if we could just, I know the one day that we're moving, May 26th, had been Stony Creek's field day. And I believe they have set a new rain date and a new date for the, the new date is actually the original rain date. But if we could just confirm that there's no after-school like functions, like we have a lot of after-school concerts, musicals, theatrical performances, like if we could just make sure, like we know what is that evening and whether or not it will be able to go forward or be moved.
I'm sorry, say, say a question again.
So for June 9th?
June 9th.
Yeah, if there's any after-school activities at the elementary level or at the high school or middle school, I mean, there could be a lot of end of, end of year activities for them as well. But I just know there's, I see, I seem to be like every single week there's something happening at school.
We, we ran it by building leaders, nobody voiced any concerns, but I will double check that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments for Jim? All right, then Dr. Jwan?
Thank you. This evening, I don't have any informational items, but I do have one action item for which we'll seek approval, a motion to approve it next week's voting meeting, board meeting. You'll see in document eight dash one is a memo that we are going to be seeking the board's approval for the district's intention to apply to PDE's FID program. FID is flexible instructional day. Being a part of this program allows us to deliver instruction virtually should the need arise for any variety of reasons, not just related to a health pandemic. And so the application prevents, provides us the opportunity to be a part of the FID program for three school years. So this application will permit us to be a part of the program for the 2324 school year, 2425 school year and 2526 school year. Any questions?
I would assume that would come up that we're not trying to replace snow days. This is just for extra things or emergencies. Correct?
That's correct. Thank you. Thank you. All right, so no, there are comments or questions, we'll move on. Jeff, I don't see any informational or action items, but did you have anything to report this evening?
Beyond that, no.
Okay, thank you. Board secretary report, Ray?
Thank you. There's no informational item and next meeting will be requesting approval of four items. The finance committee meeting, the work session, the regular public board meeting and the latest communication committee meeting. Documents 10, one through 10.
Thanks, Wade. Any comments or questions? No? All right, then can we have the board secretary or treasurer?
Thank you very much. There is no informational item and at the next meeting we'll be requesting approval and acceptance admitting the treasurer's report for March 31st for document 11 dash one.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? All right, thanks again. Human resources report, Danielle?
Good evening. Tonight, there are no informational items. For your review, our seven action items under 12B of the human resources report. The first two action items include a change of status, extracurricular changes and a volunteer, volunteer addition. And then, and an appointment as well. Action item three includes approval of a teacher on special assignment instructional coach for restorative practices job description. And item four is the approval of the creation of this position for the 2324 school year. Item five is the approval of the employee assistance program with Penn behavioral health. As a reminder, this is a mental health benefit offered to all of our employees as an added benefit. Item six is a resolution and notice of employee termination. Lastly, item seven is for the approval of the GHR staffing agreement. You should note, it should actually say staffing agreement, not an amendment. We'll make that change in the next, in the next agenda. This agreement includes an increase to our paraprofessional rate to remain competitive in finding substitute special, special education assistants. We use GHR as a substitute service only. We do hire our own, we do hire our, our, our special education assistants. Any overflow of that, we do work with GHR. And then they also provide relief to our staff who may be on leave or, you know, on vacation, those kinds of things. We do get some substitutes there. It's been a real challenge to find substitutes to come in. And again, the market. Um, and again, the market is very competitive. So we did raise the, the rates slightly in order to, you know, be more attractive in the marketplace and really help our, our specially classrooms, so. Um, so that is my report for tonight, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, thank you again. All right, now we'll move on to our committee reports, communications committee, Steffi.
Hello, um, we had one meeting on April seventeenth. The Wade already has put notes in here that you can read at ten point four. Essentially what we agreed on are, well, we didn't agree on, but we discussed that there are many opportunities in which we can share out to our community what we're thinking about for start and, and times. And then, uh, we did also talk about this the last couple of meetings, but we all, um, and as you mentioned earlier, Amy, we are moving to having start times, school start time be a topic under the Health and Wellness Committee, which makes more sense because as a district, we're looking more holistically at all things about wellness. So it makes more sense to have it there. The communications team will kind of join in because there will be many opportunities to share information. So we will be kind of co-sharing that, that opportunity. And Rosetta will be, uh, the chair from, um, the school board perspective. Additionally, we talked about our website. It's in the final stages of the revamping. The communications team has been working for almost two years to kind of do this refresh. And we're very excited to see it. There will be a soft launch this summer, but it will be up and running and live for our community starting this next school year. Any questions? There's no other items for this committee.
Great, thank you so much for that report, Steffi.
Thank you.
All right, since there are questions, we'll move on to our curriculum and technology report, Ronnie.
There are no informational items. And Dr. Jwan has a long list to discuss. I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you. Um, yes, um, we have fourteen items for which we'll seek approval at next week's board meeting. Item one is going to seek approval of our recommendation to apply for one act eighty day for our seniors. They currently have a hundred and seventy nine instructional days. They began the year with one eighty, but with the school closing on May twenty sixth, they'll have one hundred and seventy nine. So our district is permitted to submit an application for using one act eighty day for, for this purpose. And so we'll be seeking approval of that. Um, item two is the list of recommendations for our school physician and school dentist for next school year. Item number three shows the curriculum and instruction budget expenditures planned for the twenty three, twenty four school year, which includes instructional resources, assessment, software renewals, and district memberships. Item number four and five, uh, you may recall, and the last board cycle we had is an informational item. Our, um, um, curriculum, um, um, updates for next school year and instructional resources that were relevant to that. And so those items are now, those items have been on, um, the thirty day public review period uh, since March twenty eighth. And so now they're going to be here for action items to seek approval. Item number six is our partnership gateway to college partnership, which is for students to take classes at the Montgomery County Community College to earn credits for their high school diploma while also earning their college credits. Um, and so we will be extending that partnership. Um, item number seven is our agreement with the Montgomery County Community College for dual enrollment, our dual enrollment program. Item number eight is our, um, MCIU virtual high school partnership consortium partnership where we have students who may sign up for a course to ensure that they have a full load of courses for their senior year. These are also courses that we reserve for students in our gifted program who exceed the courses that we have in our high school. Um, and so that is what item number eight is, as you see outlined in document fourteen dash eight. Item number nine is our MCIU Montgomery Virtual Program, and that's our provider for our the Wissahickin Virtual Academy Program. And that's where we have students who have the option in grades K through twelve to attend a virtual program. So we have an annual agreement and there are no changes from the previous school year. Item number ten is an update about how we seek to expend the remaining RFSR funds. You'll see outlined in document fourteen dash ten, the positions that we're recommending based on feedback we've gotten and, and the needs that we've identified in the district. Item number eleven is, uh, Dr. Chris Field mentioned earlier, the Wolf, the Ultimate Frisbee Team is seeking to travel to the International Frisbee Tournament in Salt Lake City. The trip is going to take a, take place after the, the last school day. But because it is a school program, we will need to see court approval. Item number twelve is our MCIU. Uh, it's, um, a request for us to pay, uh, our invoice for the MCIU for the Age of Beginner Services. You may recall that we sought approval for a first payment earlier this year for this purpose. As you may recall, the Age of Beginner Program is for students who are school age, who are in the early intervention program, but the families may choose to have their student remain in the EI program for an additional year, although they're school age. Um, and so we'll be seeking approval of that. Second payment is outlined in the agenda and noted in document fourteen dash twelve. Item number thirteen is, um, uh, related to paying an invoice that we have for the MCIU for shared services. You may recall, we did seek court approval for, um, a first and second payment for a shared services plan earlier this school year. And so this is our third payment to the MCIU and the amount that's noted on the agenda. Additional information is outlined in document fourteen dash thirteen. And item number fourteen will be seeking approval for an agreement with Chris Singleton Speaks. And this is for our keynote speaker for the twenty three, twenty four opening school day. Mr. Singleton's message is often inspirational and aligns with our district's, um, values and vision related to cultural responsive practices. So we're excited to have the opportunity for Chris Singleton to join us as a keynote for the Welcome Back Breakfast.
Great, thank you so much for that report. Are there any comments or questions? Steffi?
So, thank you for all of this. I have a couple of questions. For fourteen B six, this is the gateway to college. So based on what I read, it's for those students who are either don't graduate or struggling to graduate out of high school. Do we have a huge, or, let me rephrase, do we have an issue of students not graduating?
Um, you are correct that this is an additional pathway for students who we see are struggling in that way. Um, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I believe the number of students who are eligible for this program is relatively small. But I can certainly get that number to the board.
Great, thank you. And then for the next one, uh, fourteen seven, and I apologize that I didn't email you in advance, so you can just send it to me later. Do we know what's dual enrollment eligible? Do we have that list?
In terms of the courses that are students are participating in?
It's not in there. Like, I don't see it.
Sure, um, we do have students that participate in world language, computer science, the communications media, and physical education courses through dual enrollment.
Okay, cool. And then lastly, fourteen B ten, it looks like we're providing SR funds for kindergarten and for reading, which is great. Is there any room or opportunity to think about math? Especially for three, four, five? Since those were critical years during COVID, you know? And it's been a little bit of a topic that's been discussed. And I know math is kind of one of those things that's a little bit. It's also one of those areas where you can't really catch up as easily. We're theoretically, I've been speaking very layman's terms, but, um, that was just another kind of thought I had.
Thank you for your question. While we don't intend to use SR funds specifically to target math, um, I'm glad that you asked the question because it, it's not a reflection of the fact that our attention is not on math. Our ta- attention is very much on math. And one of the things that we are continuing to do, and when we know the, the greatest impact on student learning and growth is the teacher and the skills that the teachers have to support students in terms of their instruction and interventions in the classroom. And so what we have been doing and what we will continue to do, um, we're pumping up and revving up next year is around ensuring teachers are supported with knowing how to provide those interventions and supports in the classroom for students around math. But all of your points are very well taken and, and we are in agreement that we know that this is an area we need to not ignore. So I'm glad that you asked the question because while those SR funds are not specifically going to be used to, for example, provide additional staffing for math, math is absolutely a part of what we're focused on in our attention. So thank you for, for lifting that out. I appreciate that.
I have something to say. So being the old fourth grade teacher, I know about math programs. And I reached out to several of my friends who still teach fourth grade and said, so what do you do when kids are having problems or not keeping up? And they said that our math programs and our times that we, that the teachers have to meet with the, with the students who are in need of help is adequate and they're doing fine. So I was glad to hear that.
Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, then we'll move on to facilities and transportation, Joe.
Thank you. There are no informational items this evening and, uh, we have five action items for discussion tonight and, but then vote next week as normal. But we also have a special, uh, single action item for vote this evening to correct an oversight, I think, for a previous, um, action item. But I'll ask Wade to maybe give us a quick run through of each of these, please.
Thank you very much. So the first item is sort of the, one of the last two items to complete the Stony Creek Project. The, um, modulators, um, the, the trailers and sort of the construction occurred where the, uh, existing kindergarten playground was, and now that is all left. We are going to be replacing it with, um, new playground equipment and it's going to be very, very nice for, um, forty two thousand dollars. And we, um, uh, proceed with that if the board approves that at the next meeting. The next is a safety item, a shady grove. It's trying to, uh, put fencing around the center island of shady grove, which will help us continue to, uh, keep the students and, uh, traffic from intersecting. Item three is again, something that's great that Wissahickin is able to accomplish, but each year we bring forward various pieces of concrete work to make sure that we have as safe, um, and good sidewalks as we possibly can. This year, it's a little bit lower than some years, it's nineteen thousand nine hundred. And the, uh, projects, uh, it's little pieces throughout the entire district. The fourth is the same exact motion as we had last year and the same amount. With the contracts, uh, the board is allowing the facilities department to buy the various things on the CoStars contract when they're needed so that from a supply standpoint, we're not wasting anything and we order it as needed as we go through the year. So it's very, very efficient. It's been very successful. The last item is, um, through the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit bid, it's the pricing for the delivery of the various unleaded gasoline, uh, diesel fuels, et cetera, uh, that the district needs to run. Um, and the prices are provided there. The, um, costs are going up a little bit, as is not surprising. But again, through the IU, it's still very, very favorable pricing. Let me to discuss the last one. So the last one is housekeeping. We just needed to declare, uh, certain things obsolete. And this motion would allow us to do that at this meeting as opposed to wait to the next meeting.
Um, so with that, I'm going to seek a motion for approval of action item fifteen C one.
So moved, second. Any comments or questions? All right, seeing none, others in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you very much for your comment.
And I actually had two questions, Wade, regarding informational items, or I guess it's actually is action items. Regarding the playground equipment, one of the questions I had, do we have, do we get issued warranties with the playground equipment? Like if something breaks, they'll fix it for a period of time?
Yeah, so th- they're limited warranties though. I mean, you can imagine that playground equipment, uh, breaks a lot and, uh, they don't want to replace it. So, um, you get a very, very limited warranty that probably covers defects more so than, uh, a child using it in an incorrect way and it breaking.
Do they offer like service contracts when you purchase this so that you can have like repairs over a period of time?
It's a great question. So in, and knowing your Stony Creek knowledge, uh, one of the things that we've looked at is we, we purchased some really, really great pieces over there, but they have been, uh, breaking, uh, higher rate than, at a higher rate than I, you know, think we all suspected. And with all issues, you have lead times of things that need to be replaced. So what I've asked them to do is to see whether or not we can just buy certain things that we think may break and have them in storage. Uh, but even that is difficult. But, uh, the other thing that truthfully, if you're thinking of the one piece of equipment that I think you may be, I think we're also going to have to talk to the various people outside of school who use that in an inappropriate way, because otherwise we're just never going to be able to keep on top of, uh, that piece breaking.
We probably are thinking the same piece. So my next question then would be, uh, one of the recess aides actually talked to me when I was at recess duty about, um, learning how to properly use the equipment. Because the equipment we have today is much different than the equipment, obviously, when she was, you know, out on the playground as a child, different than when I was a child on the playground. And, you know, she, we were talking the one day about this one piece and she didn't know if the kids were using it properly or not because the way the pieces were on it, it looked like you could climb up it, but it also looked like you should come down it. So she, she inquired as to whether or not we could have some sort of training at the beginning of the year about how the equipment is actually supposed to be used to help avoid injuries as well as, you know, items breaking.
Sure, it, I did catch the beginning though. Is this a recess aid?
A recess aid, yes.
Sure, I'm sure we can do that.
That'd be great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? No, all right, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
We'll move on now to the finance committee, David.
Thanks, Amy. By way of informational items, we, uh, have a recap of the April eighteenth, uh, Finance Committee Budget Workshop, during which we heard a, uh, very detailed seminar, uh, regarding special education from Dr. Kelly Heimeklowski, who outlined the various, uh, aspects of that, uh, area of the budget and how it affects and impacts the current budget and coming budgets, uh, as, uh, the cost for that, those particular, uh, services continue to rise and, and outpace, uh, most of the other areas of our budget. We heard a review of the staffing impact from Dr. Chris Field. We're still considering some new program or item requests. At the moment, we have a, a new autistic support classroom for elementary school and a new, uh, elementary gifted teacher, I believe, is that correct? In the, in the current budget. We visited areas of regular education, support services, business services, and student transportation as well during that. Our next meeting, as you pointed out earlier, is May the eighth at six thirty PM will be our final budget workshop. Wade, would you mind describing the action items, um, for next week?
Sure, thank you very much. So the next is normal, it's the approval of the financial reports per document sixteen dash one. Uh, the second is the approval of the twenty twenty three, twenty four proposed final budget, uh, four hundred and nineteen, uh, million, four hundred and seventy eight thousand, five hundred and eight dollars, which is a three, uh, three point three percent, um, tax, which would give us a tax military rate of twenty three point one nine. We had started at three point eight nine, so we're down to a three point three. A proposed final budget can change, we're having another meeting in May. And the details to the entire budget are provided in the document and document sixteen dash two. The instructional supply bids for, um, the twenty twenty three, twenty four school year are listed. It's art, ball sports, furniture, general supply, health, music, physical education, uh, science. Just a sort of top side note noting that, um, things are increasing in costs. On the positive side, um, the principals are buying a lot more furniture. um, the principals are buying a lot more furniture, which I'm always appreciative of, because it's gonna last you know, ten and fifteen years as opposed to some of the supply stuff which is uh consumed in the next year. On the music bid, you'll notice that it's higher than it has been. And again, they're buying, especially at the elementary level, uh, instruments to support the instructional program. And again, they're expensive instruments, uh, but they will last for uh many, many years. Um, item four is the Fox Rothschild uh leave contract. It's listed as sixteen dash four. And the retainer is the same. The hourly rate increases nominally from a hundred ninety-five dollars to two hundred dollars per hour. And item number five is the uh list of payments, which is normal. Uh, this is the um month for March thirty-first, per document sixteen dash five.
Thank you.
I think that's all for the finance committee unless there are questions.
David, I did have one question. I may have missed it. What is the topic for the next budget workshop?
Prefer to wait.
So so it's revenue. We wait to do revenue to the end because we need as much time as possible. Um, and then we present sort of where we think we're gonna be for the entire budget. And then it's all those horribly boring motions, which are like budget transfer, you know, the actual motions for all the budget approvals and uh the various items, sort of the nitty gritty for what's gonna happen in the June meeting, uh, which is, you know, quite a few motions.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right. Well, again, thank you so much for that report. We'll move on now to our policy committee, and uh Jim said he would handle this.
I'll take it in Marshall's absence. Um, we had no informational items and the uh various action items up for review tonight, vote uh next meeting are all second and final reading of the set of policies that have already had their first reading approved at the last meeting. And their the good news is there were have been no changes to any of them since the first reading.
Great, thank you. Are there any comments or questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our racial equity oversight committee. Paul?
Thank you, Amy. Uh, the racial equity oversight committee met on April seventeenth. Uh, we covered one of our recurring topics, um, which has to do with um equitable access to the gifted and A P courses. We had a terrific presentation by the administration. Dr. Duane, will you give us a quick recap?
Yeah, thank you. Um, with this topic, we were able to explore the ongoing efforts in addressing some of the disparities we see in racial representation of Black and Hispanic students specifically in our gifted program and in A P courses. And so the district's presentation reviewed relevant data um and also highlighted the current practices and actions taken so far, as well as some potential action steps. One of the rich parts of the React meetings um is the opportunity to hear from the committee. And so we always take the time to take in feedback and questions from those committee members and use that in um consideration as we move forward. And then the next time this topic comes up, we're able to review and share out what are some action steps that were taken based on some of that rich feedback and and conversation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Duane. A lot of the topics that we discuss are ongoing efforts that that take time. And uh we're delighted with the progress so far and uh we hope to continue. Uh, so we appreciate that. Uh, lastly, we do have our next meeting, which will be the last of uh of the year at May, on May fifteenth at seven P M. So all are welcome to join. It is a virtual meeting. Uh, and there are no action items for this evening, so that concludes my report.
Great, thank you so much, Paul. Any comments or questions? No? All right, well, thank you again. Um, now we will move on to our health, wellness, and safety committee report. Um, I don't see anything listed, but did you have anything to report for that? Oh, you're muted.
What I have to report is that we'll have our first meeting on May twenty-second via Zoom, and at that time, we hope to set a cadence for the rest of the meetings. And I do also hope to have some information. I sent an email to uh KT Security Solutions. They're the providers of the rapid access safe room system that Marshall had talked about. So I sent an email to see if I could get some information to hopefully have for us at that meeting.
That's the like, the classrooms that hold?
It's the, they're whiteboards that turn into bulletproof safe rooms. So um, from what I what I read on their website already is that these these whiteboards can be used and they can be actually um set up into a safe room within ten seconds. Some places, um, so they're trialing them in Alabama at two schools. Um, and what they what they also said was that if the if they don't dismantle the rooms, they could keep them set as rooms. They actually use them um for like study rooms or whatever, that they could keep them like that, or they could just use them as, or they can disassemble them and use them as whiteboards. So um, yeah, just hoping to get some information about cost, et cetera. And um, yeah, so we'll see. Hopefully, that'll that'll be good.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And did the dis- did you attend the district health, safety, and wellness? Is that coming up?
That is, that's tomorrow, we tomorrow afternoon. Yep.
Okay, wonderful. Thanks so much, Rosetta. Any comments or questions? None? All right, well, thank you again. All right, we'll move on now to our reported board representatives. Um, Marshall's not here this evening for extracurricular. Is there anything that anyone wants to share? No? Okay. Um, we haven't had M C I U meeting um or legislative committee since the last time we met on North Monaco?
Uh, nothing to report.
Nothing to report? Okay. Excuse me. Uh, P S B A liaison?
Yeah, so on uh last Tuesday, the seventeenth, we had the P S B A, which is the Pennsylvania School Board Association Virtual Advocacy Day. Um, Amy was there, Zephy was there, and Blake was there. And he he, you know, when we were the only one in my meetings that I attended that had a student rep, so that was really impactful. And Blake always had good things to say. And I feel like when a legislator hears directly from a student, that's really special. And Blake, you're so well spoken, and you did a great job. So thank you so much for being there. Um, but the topics that were discussed uh that I heard in my meetings were um asking for increased special education funding, asking for increased mental health funding uh for more school counselors, et cetera. And of course, charter school reform is always uh a topic, as well as um Plan Con got brought up, which is the uh Pennsylvania, basically, I think it's, Wade, correct me if I'm wrong, state assistance in building projects for school districts. Is that correct? And um, it sounds like there's some school districts in our area that are about to embark on some large construction projects, and so that is of interest to them and would be good for us, too. So those were the topics discussed, but it was a, I was really interesting. And on Friday, I think a couple of us, Joe and Zephy, were going to the M C I U breakfast, which will be with legislators again. So yeah, should be good.
Great, thank you for that report. Any comments or questions? All right, seeing none. Um, we will move on now to our second public comment period. Um, we're again, we'll have a max of five speakers on any particular topic. Comments are limited to three minutes. And please note that the board's practiced to engage in dialogue with speakers. When appropriate, we will follow up with responses on our website. As we have one person registered in person, Carmina?
Good evening. So I just wanted to say that this Friday is our third edition of the Wasickin Alumni Association Black Hall of Fame Ceremony, the third. So my question to the board is what would it take for us to get recognized on the website? We know that we're not an entity of the school district, but P W and Upper Dublin both have alumni associations that are not part of um, the school district, but they're recognized by the school districts. And I think that because of the impact that we make in Penland and Amber, that should be recognized on the website. So I wanted to just share another thing. The theme for our our um Hall of Fame ceremony this year is the impact and the power of our village. We're honoring people that graduated from Amber High. And you know, when we started this, we didn't know the impact and what it meant to the people in Penland and Amber to be honored and recognized. So I just wanted to share that because I was thinking about this today, Joe. This year makes seven years that I've been coming up here, asking the school board to consider this, um, to put us on the monitor in the um Odeon hallway. Um, seven years that I've been asking for recognition. And I just wanted to lastly say that one of the things that I've been speaking at at the Lower Gwinnett Board of Supervisors meeting is that the only segregated elementary school that was in this community in the turn of the century was the Penland School. So Whip Hain and Amber had integrated schools in the turn of the century, but Lower Gwinnett had a black school in Penland and a white school in Spring House. The Penland School was established one hundred years ago this year. And I challenged the Board of Supervisors and I said, if someone did not ask you to recognize that that school was there, because the baseball field is where the school, where we call the school field or the Penland School is. If we didn't recognize it, how would new people know the significance of that landmark? The interface of Bethlehem Baptist Church that's in Penland, not Spring House, that interface is a hundred and twenty years old, and it was built by domestic workers that lived in that community. And I say all that to you guys now. You guys are the twenty-first century school board of this school district. You talk about disparities in gifted program. You talk about disparities in special education. You talk about disparities and all the things related to Black and Brown students. That's a problem. And I want to ask, when are you guys going to right the wrongs that need to be done in this community? So you are more than welcome to come to the church in Bet- uh on Tega Road. The program starts at seven o'clock. Hope to see you there. I will follow up in an email. The question is, what do we need to do to be recognized by the district? Thank you.
Thank you, Carmina. Hi, Katie. Is there anyone registered online? There's no hands raised on Zoom. Hey, thank you. Then we'll move on to board comments. Um, and I had a couple of comments. Um, one, the end, the labor committee, that's coming up soon also, right?
Yeah, sorry, Danielle. When is that? Is it May twenty-fourth? Four P M, maybe?
Sorry, I'm on the spot.
Sorry, I have things before that, so it's not in my.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we had a date on the calendar, so it's coming up soon. Wonderful. Um, and you have a meeting this Wednesday evening here, right, Dan?
Yes, I was gonna say, uh, Wednesday night, seven P M in this room, um, not a board meeting, but a community meeting with some um police officers, municipality people, and um basically, just the goal of the meeting is to hear the concerns of the community, let the township know our concerns, and then figure out how we can work together to move forward to solve some of the safety concerns that we have. So it's really gonna be more of a, I would say, a listening meeting, and then hopefully, from there, that's a springboard to help us strategically plan how we can solve some problems. That's my hope.
Okay, great. And then my last question, we did mention earlier, parking. So we've been getting a lot of questions about parking. Um, and I heard that we're doing something new next year. So the current situation, can you tell us a little bit about the current situation with parking? The issue we're having and so why we made that decision to move the seniors only for next year? So I'm sure we'll get a lot of questions.
Sure. Sure, the current situation is we don't have enough parking spaces for all the students who want to park. And um, students are uh permitted to park essentially on the other side of the building and in the big lot mostly. Handful in the smaller lot, both of which are on the other side of the building. And there's no bus traffic over there to cause a safety concern when the students gather their cars or go to their cars. And the the issue is there are spots from time to time available at the stadium lot, which is on the other side of the building. Um, that lot is used on the lower end by Lower Gwinnett, by high school staff, middle school staff, middle school contractors. Even with all those vehicles in there, there are some spots available on a given day. Some days, there are events at those schools at which time there are no spots available. And so we can't really issue parking passes to students to take some of those spots. Otherwise, that functionality of all the staff parking and all the event parking, if there's something during the day. And to what Blake pointed out, the the um passenger, or the, sorry, the school bus park uh traffic and ha- and the the very real safety concern of having students walking through to and from their cars when the buses are exiting the the parking lot in that spot. So um, it's a very real problem. We're not, we're not at all saying it's not a problem. We know there are more people who want to park than uh we have spaces for. And to the point, um, next year, when we have a the uh field project, the turf project starting up, we're gonna need temporarily confiscate a few more spaces for uh either contractor parking on that side next to the fields or a staging area. So um, the problem's not gonna go away. Next year, the con- the thought would be to have it be seniors only, which is going to be good news to seniors who missed out on it and bad news to juniors who have to wait a year. Um, but really, it without creating more spaces, we're we're, our hands are tied. Yeah, I know there's calls out there to create more spaces. Uh, that is way easier said than done. There's no way to safely create more spaces that that out of the spaces that exist now. And building more spaces somewhere, creating more macadam and and somehow creating another parking lot in that very tight footprint over there, very busy footprint, um, is a long-term endeavor.
And so we heard there's more students and both are gonna be available next year. And I assume that we have students that walk, students that take the bus, students that bike ride. But do we know, like, or is every senior that wants a spot gonna be able to get one, or will there be some seniors that don't?
Uh, impossible to tell right now. Um, it has to do, as we spoke earlier, the size of the class. But then, of course, not every student can afford a car, so there's it's not like every student wants a uh parking spot. Some do, uh, most do. Not all use it every day, which is another issue. We could rotate it on a semester basis. I think that would cause a a substantial amount of disruption. I think what we ought to do is run a list to see how the 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 new approach next year goes, see what the the changes to the property will bring us in terms of the contractors and the construction. And remain nimble to adjust if we can. But one of the, one of the things I've hopefully made it clear is that we're not gonna adjust and compromise the safety. We can adjust on a long-term basis and create more parking spots if we want to reallocate our capital dollars to that. But there's really not many options, even at extra number of dollars of additional cost.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Great, other, oh, Blake, go ahead.
I just want to mention that I may suggest to the administrators, like the assistant principals as of now, that um, since they're selling these parking passes, maybe only to the seniors this upcoming year, if there's excess, say, there's more parking spots that seniors didn't purchase, that those could be open to potential juniors. Obviously, that wouldn't be like the number that it was this year, but uh that could possibly solve some uh.
I think it's good. That's the Blake Zerman optimism uh look, which I love. And yes, if there are a few more spots available next year than than initially required, we have, there's no reason to to not have.
Paul? So this supply and demand issue was a problem back when I was in school. So not not much seems to have have changed, which is understandable. We have a finite amount of space to to work with. So my question is, has anything changed recently? Do we have fewer spaces now than we've had in the last couple of years, or is this just?
I, the um, Bill, the most recent project was the pool project. Um, and I don't think truthfully that that decreased the standing uh number of uh parking spots. I probably just reallocated it based on where we're uh stacking up the buses. So in that area, it's possible that it's sort of not available at all times as opposed to available at all times perhaps in the past. Um, I I substantially like better, from a safety standpoint, the use of the uh sort of butterfly um that we have for the stacking of the buses. And I wouldn't want to go away from that because it's really, really safe and positive. Um, I can get a a total count for where our spots are now versus for that project, and it might be a small decrease that's available on a daily basis. Uh, to Dr. Chris Field's point as well, um, that site is just so busy. It's hard to imagine where we would suddenly put an additional macadam. Uh, but that's something that we can look at. And as Dr. Chris Field also noted, anything we would do in the macadam would would take a heightened uh additional project for water detention because of some of the issues that we have going on in that site.
Also, something to note, too, is that in our continued conversations about a possibility of changing start times comes the possibility of moving from double tier busing to triple tier busing. And um, one of the grave concerns of that whole of the whole campus, uh, and residents know this, is the traffic. So I think traffic is linked to parking, and the more vehicles that want to come to that uh space at the same time, the the more acute the problem is. And so if we go to triple tiering, that might alleviate some degree of the traffic, which might in turn have an impact on how many people want to drive a personal car at the same time. Um, so that's an unknown. Uh, we will never really be able to predict that, other than just do triple tiering and see what happens. But I did want to. But I did want to throw it out there that that's, that's still under consideration for a possible adjustment in September of twenty-four. So that, that, if that changed to triple tiering busing happens, that will have an impact on vehicle traffic and parking.
Thanks, Jim. Other questions or comments?
I just have one quick thing. On Wednesday, May third, um, Laura Gwinnett, the middle school and the high school all participate in a national bike walk and roll to school day. Um, and we did this last year just with the, um, elementary level. Um, but this year we're trying to include, uh, the two other, um, schools. So the police will be out there to help us. Um, last year Laura Gwinnett Police set up sort of a, kind of a makeshift cone off bike lane on night road. Um, and we had some extra officers around the schools helping us out as well. It was really fun. And it's a great way to show everyone that we can safely ride our bikes to school. Maybe we can alleviate some traffic, who knows? Um, but I want to just say, and then only parking, right? We have bike ride. But I do want to say that even if you're not participating, please allow extra time that day to get to school. We really want, and if you can avoid night road, avoid it. It's the last day of PSSAs for a lot of grades and you need to be on time, but, um, let's just allow a little extra time that day. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dan. Any other questions or comments? Right. And seeing none. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Right. Motion made. Second, if there are any comments or questions, kidding, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.